All right, six of five, I'll call the meeting to order. We'll pause for a moment of silent reflection. Plating on this in the fudge. Right.
Pledgees.
To the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Willie, would you like to give us in a roll call, a donation form?
Okay. Steve Danny.
Here.
Shane Davis.
Here.
Jerry Bermanmeister.
Here.
Jennifer Roberts.
Here.
Marissa Skag.
Here.
All right, we are all here. In our Google Drive, we have a copy of the meeting minutes from July thirteenth of two thousand and twenty-three. Any questions, comments, concerns with those? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
And make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion in a second for approval of the July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three minutes as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Okay, Willie, you want to give us the clerk treasurers report?
It's gonna be quick here. Look at the bills we paid this month. We spent a little over three million dollars paying bills. A lot of that's due to bonds that were due in January and July first. Also, Park Department paid quite a bit for our new beautiful park. And several large bills, but overall, here, we don't have the balance to it.
No, we do not.
Okay.
Yeah. Any questions for Willie or regarding the claims for the month of July? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to approve the claims for the month of July.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second for approval of the claims as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Okay, next up, we've got department reports. Chief Barr, would you like to go first?
Good evening. Jerry, I missed the meeting, your first meeting, so welcome.
Thank you, sir.
I was gonna call in from the beach, but I couldn't get Wi-Fi. I apologize.
Your loss.
Absolutely the only reason, so. With that being said.
Thank you.
Yeah. Delta Police Department report for last month. Really not much of a narrative for last month. We didn't have anything that was exciting or anything like that, that I put the narrative in there, but dispatch calls for the month was one thousand six hundred and eighty-eight, two hundred and twelve Indiana code warnings, hundred and sixty citations written, adult criminal arrests fifty-five. And one reason those numbers are so large is the guys have been working a lot of the operation pull over, which is the extra paid detail by the state of Indiana. And I love when I read chatter, watch chatter, and it talks about the guys out enforcing traffic laws and how just stupid that is and a waste of time because there's other crimes that can be dealt with. But that fifty-five criminal arrests, that's people taken to jail, shows that traffic is a large cause of that. And there's a lot of heathens on our roadways, and that's how we find them. So it's just amazing how those numbers coincided for last month. So the guys have been working hard. The interstate, I'm sure you've heard, work in the interstates during the week. Feel free to go out there and ride anytime. You'll enjoy it, and you'll see why they do it. That's about it. Local ordinance warnings were seventeen. This is kind of a nice number, zero juvenile criminal arrests. But that was a week before the month before school started, so. Maybe hopefully we can stay at zero. That's all I have. We do have big happenstance for, I think Marissa knows, something happened last month and/or this month, so it's not marked for yet, but Jerry Branson, Officer Jerry Branson, had seventy-two DUI arrests last year on his own. And so he was receiving one of the All-Star Awards through the Indiana Criminal Justice Institute. And we got to go to lunch and everything down Victory Field. He got to hobble up with the governor and, but. Not to take away from any department when it comes to these DUI arrests, but some of the larger departments have traffic detailed officers. Well, my officers work traffic and take calls, so he can get pulled away from his job and not always be just working traffic. And then other departments also, you get an officer stops a drunk, calls a guy, and he comes and takes them. The majority of these seventy-two are self-generated. That's him out working traffic. And so those are good numbers. He does an excellent job. And you'd be amazed at DUI case, how much is involved. It should be as simple as I smell alcohol or you're sloppy drunk, and here you go to jail, but it's not. And there's so many steps from the time you make the stop, which has to be proven to be legal, to the time you take them to jail and do your paperwork, that's scrutinized. Zakhi Ali's the king of it. And Jerry Branson is very knowledgeable of DUI arrests. We're happy to have him, the guys, he gives his knowledge to the guys, they feed off of him, and seventy-two on his own is pretty good. So that'll be, I think it's coming out in the newspaper.
Congratulations, Officer Branson.
I'll tell you.
Any questions for Mark?
So Mark, you mentioned maybe right alongs?
Absolutely.
I'd love to do that someday.
Yeah. And, uh, and I just always say Jerry, because Jerry's, he never stops, and he's always hunting, and he's always doing, and you can learn a lot from Jerry. But Officer Alford on nights, been here thirty years.
Once again.
Yeah, next year. Very knowledgeable to town. He's the guy that, when he's driving down the back alleys and stuff, if he sees a light on, he knows whether that light should be on or shouldn't, and can tell that's not right or that's wrong. And it's pretty neat watching him do that. But any of the officers, anytime there's someone that you can jump in with.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else? Thank you very much. Doesn't look like Judge Spurwick is online, and I think he sent me an email saying he wasn't going to be here tonight. So with that, we will move on to Aaron and the park report.
Good evening. Really, just one thing. August eighteenth, from five to seven, there will be a ribbon-cutting ceremony, and the playground will be open. So we would love for all of you to be able to make it. Tell your friends. We'll have food trucks, DJ. The unveiling of the bicentennial mural will be right before the ribbon-cutting ceremony. From about four-thirty to seven, there'll be some activity going on. You have my report. Any questions for me? Comments? They are not. That is that. Yes, those are all, those are all old ones from, that were around the drinking cup, from when the Moms Club did the original playground. Yep, that is the completed project.
And the mural that Aaron was talking about is for, is commemorating the Madison County bicentennial. And that is at four fifteen at the Duck Barn.
Yes.
On Friday. And that will, this isn't really directly related to Aaron and the Park Department, but that kind of kicks off our weekend of activities regarding the Madison County bicentennial. Since Sunday will be the porch parties from one to five. So the bicentennial mural and playground, it opens on Friday. And then that event is on Sunday from one to five. Anything else for Aaron?
Deal. Thank you very much.
Hannah Rose in the planning department?
I don't have anything here really that exciting, but. The site development reviews, we have one that just got passed on the third. That's the Dollar Tree. It'll be where the old Swifty Gases on sixty-seven. I have a secondary plat that is being submitted probably by beginning of next week for a block of the North Heritage Way Roundabout property. They're working on that. Right now, we're gonna split it into two parcels, but they are going block by block. They're not blocking the entire property off at once for end-user flexibility. Our community coordinator position, Carrie, he submitted to me a bullet point of list there, as you can see, of all the things he's been working on since he got here. His main focus right now is really getting Pendleton Main Street and PBA's foundation blocks built for the things that they're in need of right now. So he is working on some grants for the town that do have some overlap, but right now, probably until the end of the year, getting them set up to where they can function a little bit easier is his top priority right now. And then just kind of last thing is our business park trail. We did select a route with MCAG where our consultant is gonna start assessing feasibility of that route. What we're doing right now with MCAG monies is preliminary engineering. So what is the viability of the route that we want, and basically creating eventually a set of shelf-ready plans that when MCAG gets more money that they can grant out to us, we can pull one of those off the shelf and go and build it. Or if we have a developer go in to purchase as a property, it would be a requirement of their development to build said part of that trail. So that's really exciting. And we've set up a bi-weekly meeting similar to what we do with US thirty-six and that project. And that will be on the agenda now until, till probably a very long time from now. So. So that's all I have. If there's any questions for me.
I just wanted to make a comment, and I'm so excited to have Mr. Carrie on board.
Yes.
Open for some good grants coming through our town.
He is, he is doing a phenomenal job thus far, and he is looking into some things that we've never considered, didn't know existed. And his prior work experience, I think, really benefits that because he's worked in that industry before for the state. So it's been fantastic.
Great. Anything else for Hannah Rose with the planning department? Hey. Town manager report, Scott.
Okay, so in that light of new employee hitting the street running, our new IT director is here, Jacob Johnson. And of course, today, his debut in front of you, the internet goes down, not his fault. Frank.
Partially.
Partially. So anyway, we're glad to have him on board, and he's in the phase of seeing where we're at, where we need to get. One of the shortfalls that he'll be focusing on early is our metering system, automated metering system. It's got some issues, so he'll be focusing on that. Apparently, my report somewhere, but not here. So highlights, if you notice, the shades and the outdoor furniture has been placed at the depot parking lot. That's what I would call temporary. It will come down in the heavy part of the winter, then we'll put it back up. And what's nice about that, too, is, you know, we're in the stages of at some point reconstructing that, that whole parking lot. So it's that, the stuff that was put up, such a, the furniture won't, won't get thrown away. Working off my memorization, printed it out. The other highlights that we have going, the guys did a wonderful job during a series of storms that we've had. They really got out there and cleaned things up. But anyway, open for questions. Trying to think the survey for one of the projects that is complete. Finished that, so we're about ready to get started on that one.
The shade sales, the furniture in the depot parking lot were made possible by the grant, the ARP grant.
Yeah, thank Lisa Floyd for that. Thank you.
So if you haven't driven back there or walked back there, it's, it's a nice space. Especially for those of us who are down here and like to eat our lunch someplace other than our desk. It's very nice. Any questions for Scott? Right, great. Moving on to old business ordinance twenty-three eighteen, amending the golf cart seatbelt policy. This is the second read, and as we already talked about it, Chief Barr walks out. So basically, what this is doing is aligning our ordinance with the application for a golf cart permit. Or whatever we want to call that. The checklist that we go through when we're issuing, issuing those permits, this aligns the document that we use to check off with the ordinance that we had originally written. And so that is, that is the second read on that. Any questions regarding that? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion for approval on second read of twenty-three eighteen, amending golf cart seatbelts.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Yeah, absolutely.
So I know our last meeting, we talked about seatbelts on golf carts, and, but this is just.
The same thing that we voted on last time.
Second read.
Second read. There have been no changes to the ordinance as presented last month.
Okay.
Yep.
I'll make a motion approved twenty-three eighteen.
We have a motion for approval of twenty-three eighteen as presented. Do we have a second?
Oh, second.
You have a motion and a second for approval of twenty-three eighteen, second read on amending golf carts and seatbelts. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion passed. Ordinance passed. Okay, moving on to new business. As a, this is not an item that we're going to vote on, but we did receive a competitive interest form for an employee that will be filed. I guess this serves as notice that we received that, and now it will be filed at the clerk treasurer's office.
The council can formally accept the statement and then request our clerk treasurer's office file that with the state as described in the book.
But we don't actually need to make a motion for approval of this.
As the presiding officer, you could acknowledge, receive.
Here, Marissa, acknowledge you received it.
Are there, is there any questions, comments, or concerns regarding this before I acknowledge that I received it? Okay. I acknowledge that I received that. Okay.
Jacob is a hundred dollar bill with this.
Oh, don't joke about that type of stuff. Okay, moving on to the scrivener's error on the twenty-three thirteen hourly, hourly labor charges. This is not the salary ordinance. This is the fee that we charge others.
Right.
And so Scott, do you want to talk about the change on there?
So while Craig, our lucky superintendent, was working up some billing, he noticed that it was going directly off the latest ordinance and noticed that two of the, one of the rates had gone down at their rate. It was stated for lineman standard rate at sixty-four dollars. It should have been eighty-six, and then the time and a half, break that to one twenty-nine instead of ninety-six. So we just need to acknowledge it, that the scrivener's are put out publicly. Building's correct. Eighty-six, one twenty-nine for lineman. Twenty-three dash thirteen. Yes, that's.
You're right here.
That's, that's no vote.
No votes necessary.
Tight.
Wonderful. So we don't need to vote anything on that because it already has. Okay, moving on, presentation of the South Madison Fire Protection Territory twenty-twenty-four budget. We should have all of that in our drive, and Chief Nodine is here.
Good evening, everybody.
Excellent.
Cool. Just to kind of give you, because I normally send my report to you guys, but since I was gonna be here, I'll just give you a little bit of brief synopsis of what's going on so far. First and foremost, on the twenty-seventh, one to four is our Public Safety Day. This year is gonna be a little bit different. I think it's gonna be a little bit bigger than what we've anticipated in the previous years. A good friend of mine's son is in a wheelchair, and he's graciously gonna bring his lemonade stand down. So for donations for carrying kids cancer, as well as the Hoosier Burn Camp, so we're gonna split all the proceeds that we collect here at the intersection. And then whatever he makes off of his lemonade stand to split that fifty-fifty. So we look for the Patriot Guard's gonna rally up some motorcycle troops, and a couple of their groups are gonna be coming down, so it's gonna be a, a big deal this year. So. Been dealing with some of the new buildings that are going in. Obviously, Wolfie's Three Rivers. And then I just had a conference call today with the Community Medical Center on some issues with the second egress and entrance to their area. So I think we've got things squared. Well, I'll get with Hannah on that later on. So far for the year, we've did fourteen hundred and twenty-seven runs. June of last year, the Pendleton Emergency Ambulance secured an ambulance for us. Knowing that the transition of the fire territory and stuff, that ambulance has been secured. Well, inflation of those ambulances, that cost went up about seventeen thousand dollars in a matter of two months. We finally got that ambulance delivered to the manufacturer. It's in line. It should be delivered by the end of the year. During that process, we were contacted by the city of Franklin, who ordered a chassis for another ambulance. It was highly recommended that we purchase that chassis. And then just sit on the lot until we get the money to procure it, to build a box and put everything else because of the inflation of these chassis that are going through the roof. Not only that, but the availability to get a chassis is few and far between. The first one that we were, came from South Carolina. So there was nothing in the state of Indiana, and it's, it's not gonna get any better anytime soon. Our fire truck that we expect is still in order. I haven't started building it yet, but it's due in sometime Q-three, Q-four of next year. So that'd be almost a two-year build on that. If we were to buy a ladder truck right now, the cost is about two million dollars in four years to build. So that tells you how far everything is going in the automotive industry for fire services. So it's, you know, we gotta take advantage of when we can. We're looking at some used equipment to provide us a little bit of a gap until we can actually get one, actually place up one order. So we're working through all of that. And then it leads us to what we tend to talk about today. Do you have any questions so far for that, before we get into budget? All right, cool. So initially, when we started the fire territory, we did a three-year phase in that was presented to the public. That three-year phase in in the year twenty twenty-four was going to be four point eight, three, five, six, three, three. That allows us to add another twelve firefighters with all the longevity, the insurances and stuff like that, to be hired in July of two thousand and twenty-four. We are in the process of a safer grant that allows us to potentially hire six firefighters, and we will carry their salary for three years, funding free. And then at that time, at the end of the three years, they in turn go onto our payroll at the end of three years. If we get the safer award, then I'm able to hire those folks to be on staff January first of two thousand and twenty-four. So fingers crossed that we can get those hired in. So with the budget that you see in front of you, the Darren Isaacs and Jake Gardner, my two assistant chiefs, have worked their tails off, along with Karen, to get this thing squared away. We sat down today, went through line by line, and came up with everything. As a yearly total for two thousand and twenty-four is four point two million and some change going forward for the next year. And then in two thousand and twenty-five, that increase will step up again as we plan it from day one. So you have any questions so far on that?
This has already been, this exact budget, as we see it, has already gone through the township or your fire territory board and both of the township boards.
That's correct.
And great, correct?
That's correct.
Per the MOU, we're the last stop. And that has, we have to hear this and have it presented to us in August. And so we are fulfilling that obligation tonight by having this presented to us. And then at this point, Jeff, correct me, we can either approve it or send it back with corrections at this juncture before we get the final, final version in September. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
And if you guys accept it, then do I have to bring it back?
It's done, it's done.
Okay. The only thing that I see that directly pertains to the town, I guess, or this unusual agreement that we have is on the hydrant rental, a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. I know that a hundred and five of that was from Pendleton Hydrantal. We've since restructured our water rate, and so the town's draw on your hydrant rental is zero. And so that's the only sticking point that I see with this as it sits right now is that hydrant feline item, at least for our perspective, like our chunk of that hundred and twenty-six should be zero.
Correct, but we have an eighty thousand dollar loan to pay out over the course of three years. So that's the reason why the hydrant rental fee is in there, because if we have to pay that, that's where that money's gonna come from. If that loan is forgiven, then yeah, we can zero that line out, item out, but we still have the debt from the loan that was presented at the end of last year that we still have to pay.
That would be a deadline item, though.
We'll change the name.
Right.
It's just, the money's gotta be in there, because if we take it out, we still gotta pay that money that we're gonna have a shortfall. So that's the reason why that is still in there, because we still have, and the question is still, can that loan be forgiven by you folks, because that was the ordinance that was established at that time?
Jeff, you have clarity on that today?
Yeah. Given, the, the, the town council can't write off a loan from a utility. If it's general fund, you could, but since it's a utility, you cannot. However, if you would like, you can use general fund to, bottom line, the utility must be repaid.
Right.
How that comes about, it can come from the original loan document through the fire territory, or the town council can use general fund money to pay it back. But the utility has to pay back by some point. I guess you can call that a forgiveness, but if we can't just as.
We can't just write it off. That's fine, because of the utility.
Because I would for sure where that loan came from to pay that.
From the warranty.
Yeah, so that was, when I, when we came up, that was the first time I even read that ordinance, and so it kind of took me off guard to figure out how it was gonna pertain and where I've gotta come up with the money to pay for it. So if I take that money out, I mean, I can change the name. It's just, it has to be in there, because if not, I'm gonna be eighty-some thousand dollars short.
Right. Well, you do have three years to pay it, but I mean.
But I wanna get it out. I wanna be done with it.
That's fair.
Also, the, the twenty-one thousand from the hydrant fee is also from Eagles. The subject to further negotiation with the town of Eagles. So that probably shouldn't be in there either until we, that might be kept off also.
Yeah, so from my perspective, and I want to file this sitting here. I'm not, I would, I, when I go to approve this, I want to see it in its close to accurate form as possible. I know there's some questions about dispatch fees, the hydrant rental being one. And so, you know, pledges being what they are, they're fluid until we get down to that crunch time. I know that the MOU says that we have to, that the town council has to approve it, or the provider unit has, has to approve it by September fifteenth. I would like to see this in its closest to final form. That gives us time to figure out the utility loan situation also. And what mechanism we need to use to figure that out, whether it's stretching the term further or whatever we need to do to, you know, figure that out. I, that would be my, that's how I feel, but I'm not seeking for anybody else sitting.
Do we have an idea? Because you want the dispatch fees removed out there, but it's still a big question, and it's,
Mike.
From my understanding, that's not gonna get resolved, so that's why we've put it in there.
And so you intend to pay it if it's in there?
If it's in there, yeah. I mean, that's, they send us a bill, so.
Okay, and you paid it in June?
I have not yet, because I was told not to. Because it was trying to figure out where, where everything resides at the county level. And if I pay it, and they decide something, I'll never get that money back.
Right, but I mean, following the logic of if you get a bill, you pay it. That's not what we did in June.
I've got to the end of the year, too.
Okay.
So the money's in the budget already in two thousand and twenty-three.
According to.
According uh to me. What the board, what the fire territory board voted on, the townships voted on, is a budget. That is in its entirety going to probably be less than what's what's being presented tonight.
Right.
So I agree with you. I I I want it to be as accurate and on on point as possible or one hundred percent. So tonight, we're meeting the requirement of it being presented.
Right, yes.
And then we, it'll get uh, it'll get worked out.
A little bit and then brought back in September.
And hopefully the county can figure something out between now and dispatch, but. I doubt it. So it's gonna still be in there, so.
That's fine if it's in there, but if it's in there, I wanna pay it. That's all I, that's my Pendleton pays bills. That's all, that's my thought on that. So. Okay, so this satisfies satisfies the requirement of this being presented. Now we have to provide in writing.
We have to, we have to formally reject the budget. That sounds harsh. It sounds like we're really, really close, but reject the budget to incorporate the the directions, the clarifications and just.
Okay, do we need to do that in writing?
We have to do that through a book, a formal vote of the council.
Okay.
And then, yeah, we, I, if I was the fire protection board, I would certainly want it in writing, what, what it is, whether the trend piece or recording.
Okay.
Yes.
So then. I would entertain a motion for a, I, is there a way to use, not use the word rejection?
No, cause that's the way.
Okay, fine. Then I make a motion that we have a formal rejection of the budget pertaining to hydrant fees and dispatch fees. As presented and with the expectation that they remedy by September.
The modification, it needs to, we need that information to go to the fire protection board by first, preferably go for that, say. You, you could direct the town manager, town attorney, clerk treasurer to provide that. This board consists of lots of discussed.
Okay. So that was clear as mud. So. I'm entertaining a motion for rejection of the budget as pertaining to dispatch fees and hydro rental fees.
So moved.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
And that's gonna be real quick. And that's gonna be a letter signed by the president of the town council then.
Sure, or I mean, do you want it to be Willie or clerk treasurer's office?
It's, you would be signing on behalf of the town.
That's fine.
Okay, it's a council.
Okay. All right, we have a motion. We have a second.
All second.
All right, we have a motion in a second for rejection of the fire territory budget as it pertains to dispatch fees and hydrant fees. Okay, all in favor, signify by saying I opposed motion.
Cool, thank you.
Okay, twenty-three, twenty-five uh regulating overnight parking. God, do you wanna talk about this for a second? Or really maybe Mark should talk about it. Mark split brought it up to us.
Okay, we just.
Prohibits overnight parking between the hours of two AM and five AM in any public parking lot.
Any public parking lot, you can't. This is so you guys can tow it. Cars can park in there, so. So the two, the two, two AM to five AM, that was chosen because of the businesses that stay later, open later. Restaurants apart, so that's why we picked that time period.
Any other questions regarding that? If not, let her.
Question, yeah, go ahead. Just for the establishments that do stay open later. People that maybe have a couple beers and get a ride home from a buddy and come pick their car up at seven AM. Seven AM the next morning, you almost kind of penalize them a little bit.
Yeah, the.
On a good weekend, two thirty.
So your employees need to be.
Yeah.
Have something that pertains to if it's there for more than twenty-four hours or it's noted to be there for more than twenty-four hours and then at that point.
Then you're gonna have someone physically go around.
Yeah.
Be a lot of, there'll be a lot of vehicles towed by people. I think, I think um. Yeah. Is there anyone that parks over there that lives in an apartment that either parks on the street or has to park there?
We allow them during a snow emergency to move to the public parking lot. That's up to the. Landowner, private park, the tenants. So to do it during a snowstorm, we allow them to, they can come in, be a little blacker, then put it on there. Okay, but generally, we don't move our.
What's uh chief, what's the, I can't remember off the top of my head. What's the orange tag say? For a move vehicle that can be moved on public property?
Forty-eight hours on public. But it has to be replaced and off the pole.
It has to be moved within a certain time, even if it's just a couple inches.
Right, but. I think this whole thing started and I'm. Has to do with we have our new public parking lots. This is where everybody wants insurance and the one by the church. And the thought was, they didn't want all the renters. Because the landlords have told their clients, you've got their tenants, you can park there. And. Two if I'm renting now, sure, but it's public parking. The goal there was to provide the downtown businesses, the downtown office. Uh I mean, there's one part that parks right out here on State Street, they're all the time. Does it bother them? No, it's legally parked. It's legally planted. It's what it is. We got rid of the two-hour parking downtown. Uh because people believed that we were wrong to the point that two hours didn't get you at that time to hit all the stores. And we wanna see people hate dogs. Chalk tires, downtown, we all kinds of hate.
Are the parking lots full? Like they're public?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, they're nine years a day. What you're getting, you're getting employees, you're getting renters, and then you're getting visitors to downtown. So. Parking's premium.
I don't really like it.
It wasn't until the last discussion about this that I knew about the snow removal allowance part of it. So.
So the problem is certain people were continually parking. This, in this case, this parking. Tow, obviously.
Yeah, expired plates, flat tire. Just play at that game. But we were gonna stick her in because it's an awful. Two to five time. I was about to release that all before, so I was in large of five.
And there's. And there's possibility of of a private parking that could go, I mean privately owned parking could go private. Possibilities of that, so that's gonna take away the four part.
So we need a parking garage, like space underneath.
I mean, for business, we have.
How many spots are over here by uh? On that, twenty-four.
Thirty-eight, twenty-four. I don't have a mark here, but. Reconstruct it will be. And then, over at the bank says it's bank parking lot. I know that's private, but. That's additional.
Little bit church.
Church.
Twelve fifty.
That, the problem is, even with this, we put up more signs because the feedback that we had is that people weren't there as well. Uh people said I would, are not finding. We are in the process, by the way. So this, the parking lot over there, we're going to have it resealed, it's repainted, have it. Clearly marked with the public spots.
With our hearts ready.
Yeah, that's it. And uh. Like most people don't realize the parking lot is public.
I think being a downtown business owner, a lot of people come from out of town to visit our shops. And people don't know where to park, what, where you can, where you cannot.
Yeah, so. You know, so the input was, you were in on that, maybe. It's not clearly, the signage is not clear, so we put up the sign and we immediately got plates inside for two. There. To this, to this.
Is the main problem this one here, this lot here, where people overnight park?
Yes.
It seems like it's, it's one of those where uh. I don't, I don't wanna word the, use the word punish, but we're gonna punish everybody for a couple of people that are doing it.
Well, it winds up with a point. I encourage people to drive home. I mean, they should. So does it, could we identify that one as no overnight parking?
Yeah.
I mean, is that a compromise of the situation? I mean, because if that's the one that we're getting the issues with. I understand the concern about, oh, I mean, allowing it down here. Uh and that's the only lot that actually has those signs that say no overnight, three to five. Okay, it's the only one that has those, but it has no. So if that were to be the one, oh, particularly tied to that personal.
I think it was, if I remember right, it was also part of the leasing.
Just that one?
Yes, just that's the only one, yeah. And that's why, that's why they're signed. What's the problem? Why is the sign there? I believe the foundation was not involved in this sort of activity. For that downtown renters, no use of that parking lot as their apartment. Which in turn would fill spots all day to prevent people from coming in. Exactly, because all renters park. That one's close enough for traffic wise. If I'm running downtown, the park there, that's where I park. Uh and that's the reason, there's gotta rest and park there, get up to it in the morning, go move their car. So they gotta park elsewhere. And I fear the police towing up the building. So that's why they do five percent. But even that has to be babysat.
Right.
Because I've gotta chalk the tire and. See if they've been there between those hours, at least come through and say, okay, blue car, yellow car, and come back at five. But you could amend it to say.
But what Mark just said is, who's gonna? I mean, it's one of those things where I think if we, we have a habitual situation.
Have we reached out to the owners of the, the, the owners of the apartments being rented and say, listen?
What? What? By the way. Yeah, I don't, I, I.
That's kind of what I do that all, right, yeah.
Two to five is literally to make that so there wasn't. No property, people park.
I'm pretty sure it's part of these.
Okay, so if it's part of these, then we probably do need to have it memorialized in some actual, right? Okay. Or that lot, yeah. So.
Sometime during the night, things get by, first through there, and see what's sitting.
Okay. Okay, so we need to amend this.
Uh we just need to put any leased public parking.
Okay.
Actually, we have to.
Right, that's why I was saying.
But, but I'm sure they don't want it either.
The one next laundromat is all.
We are.
We give church ten dollars here.
Yeah, there, so it is, so it'd be too.
Okay, and any.
We just.
Least parking spaces, okay.
So which parking spaces are we talking about yet?
Right, your laundry, your morgue.
And the church.
And the church.
Does that feel more palatable?
I just feel like we're punishing a lot of people for the. Two or three people.
I mean, it's true. And then like in the future, if we have more businesses that come in, you know, and then they're. Right.
Well, what would happen if we didn't enforce them? Just say there's no sign, it's public parking. What are you gonna have? You're gonna have. Renters.
I'm sure as soon as one gets away, I bet, I don't know how many there is.
But they go to work during the day, so.
So I think you would eventually, well, eventually I think you'd see five or six sitting there. Parking there all the time. And remember, like I just said, that's part of the lease decree, lease agreement that, that they, we do not allow overnight parking.
You do have parking, that many parking there overnight, no?
No, I'm just saying, if you start to let them do it, you would, you would eventually see, I could easily see three to seven, you know, in that range.
So if you're upstairs, yeah.
So. Yeah. So.
And I also think this maybe is a, like you said in writing, this is already in the lease agreement with that parking lot. Forces, right? So it's discluding the church maybe and just having it be with this moment, not the person. I'm sure they don't want that.
Well, yeah.
I don't know.
Haven't looked at that.
Is it?
But I'm sure, I'm sorry about the church. I'm sure they don't want it, because that would be the easiest place to squat, you know.
What other towns do? Like where their parking lots.
Oh, they go no overnight parking.
Pay, pay watch.
Yeah, listen, show me where it's, it's not allowed. I mean, I think they're being pretty. That particular lot.
So like Fortville, even if they have, like in those parking lots are.
Yeah, they've got signs in Fortville, actually, you're correct. That's pretty universal.
I'm fine doing this on the one where we have it memorialized in writing as part of the lease agreement that we don't allow. Overnight parking, because that's in the lease agreement. I think that that is. What we should do and what we should have done when we started leasing that lot, most likely is make sure that we had this somehow documented. But I also share the concerns of people. Leaving a car out of a safety standpoint and needing to have that flexibility. In that case. Or, or, you know, I don't know what else. If you're setting up for an event in the middle of the night or something, I don't know what other things we'd be doing, two and five. Uh.
We could put no parking from two to five unless you're.
Well, that's where the enforcement is where it's. Yeah, I I feel for the employees.
Right.
They gotta park somewhere, and then I gotta park right in front of the restaurant.
Well, no, you don't want to park right in front of the restaurant.
Park everywhere else. Park closest to two, I'm still on the floor, and.
I mean, I mean, we'll say we get here pretty soon. We're gonna get more and more people, more bars, three o'clock.
So what's the pro, what is the?
They're still sitting out there at three o'clock.
What, what is this solving? To do this, that during the day, that there's still cars parked there from open night? Is that what you mean?
It would take away spots for. If the tenants started parking there, and then. The core, the core problem is also with that one, is that. So let's just start from the beginning, so we had a lease agreement, the sign was put up, it says no parking for the lease. Two to five, Mark Keenan, uh, B, I think, and said, hey, you don't have an ordinance, so our guys can't tow, we had a problem. But we need to put an emergency, so this ordinance is put together, so that's the fact. It's a possibility, just charge twenty-five dollars for if you love it overnight, and then the money goes to the police department for enforcement. I don't know if that sounds like a good idea or a bad idea, but if I was drunk that night, I don't care about twenty-five dollars, but I wouldn't care about it if it added up over time.
Be cheaper having to tow.
I don't care about twenty-five bucks versus a five thousand, ten thousand dollar lawyer fee and all that, I mean, I mean Uber is what. I mean, you're just trying to get rid of someone that has the same car going in the same spot over and over again, just start tagging them twenty-five dollars, and let them go to the police department enforcement. I'll be happy because they would have money, I mean, as far as going towards, um, their equipment and both parties win, because. Eventually, it's gonna be really expensive, but you don't have to worry about that trophy of where my car is, you still have your car. Just thought. Not trying to add it to work. Don't fall into the die, parking's not gonna be in.
Try and ask a question.
Yeah, come, yeah.
What I understand you're saying is, I can't go to any, but if you pass this, I can go to any public parking at town of Hamilton. Walk into the stable and get drunk, you still want me to drive home? You don't want me to call for a ride and get my car out the next morning?
Well, now we're tying you back, is this one back here, but, so it's not any parking, it's specific to this lot here.
The street park is still.
Well, I think you bring up a good point, though, ma'am, and we encourage people not to drink and drive, but, yeah, if you don't leave your car from two to five, we're gonna tow you.
So we're gonna put LPR cameras on that lot, and then send you the bill. All right, our only option is just leave the sign up, because it's part of the lease agreement. We just don't give our police officers the way to enforce it, eventually the tenants will figure it out.
But if we don't do anything, how they figure it out? Well, no, what I'm saying.
They tested, like, that guy, that guy was tested. I was parking, see if they tested me.
I thought you were saying that they're gonna figure out that they shouldn't park there, it's like, how are they gonna hear that they shouldn't park there?
There'll be a sign, there's still.
It wasn't, it couldn't move, right, right, yeah, it was in our, okay. So we will table this and chew on it and figure it out, is that, is that sound?
I know, you could leave it, you could do it, and then if you just notice a vehicle that keeps parking there, then it, then it gets you, but otherwise, it's just like.
We can't take the sign. I'm not gonna take the sign.
No, I know, I'm just saying, you could pass this, but not.
That was hard, that lease was hard enough to get.
You need to come ride.
I don't like rules that we don't enforce, or. So let's just pass on this for right now and think about it over the next month, and. See it in September, or think of a different addressment issue with that, okay.
Yeah, I wanna do some research for other communities. Let's see what, what the kind of signs they have.
Okay, great, sounds good, all right, twenty-three, twenty-six, amending the speed limit on Water Street.
I'm gonna have a formal motion table by later, but.
Sure.
I'll make a motion to table this till September.
So.
All right, we have a motion and a second to table twenty-three, twenty-five, regulating overnight parking, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is officially. Okay, twenty-three, twenty-six, Water Street speed limit. This will go between Main Street and US thirty-six, also known as Sierra sixty-seven. Making the speed limit twenty. All along Lars. And this has gone through the park board for their approval. And now it's here. Any questions or comments? Regarding the lowering of speed limits to twenty miles per hour? Okay. If nothing, then I will entertain a motion for approval.
Make a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the approval of twenty-three, twenty-six, admitting the speed limit on Water Street between Maine and US thirty-six, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Do we want to suspend the rules? Does, I mean, okay, requires the MS consent to suspend the rules.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and have the second read tonight.
So, okay, the motion and a second for suspension of the rules to a second read on twenty-three, twenty-six, admitting the speed limit on Water Street. All in favor of suspending the rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, rules are suspended, allowing for a second read of twenty-three, twenty-six, admitting the speed limit on Water Street. The same night it was introduced, so with that, I will entertain a motion for approval of the second read of twenty-three, twenty-six.
I make a motion for second reading.
I have a motion for second read, do I have a second on the second read?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second for the second read of twenty-three, twenty-six, admitting the speed limit on Water Street between Maine and US thirty-six, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay, motion. Okay, last item of new business, ordinance twenty-three, twenty-seven, stop signs on Water Street at County Road three hundred west. This is a little bit of an unusual location, um, and this is kind of a preemptive move before we get into the reconstruction of Sierra sixty-seven slash US thirty-six. We're worried people are gonna use that as a cut through and add additional traffic on an area that typically doesn't see a lot of traffic, and so this would create. A stop all the way around and a traffic calming measure for that intersection. Scott, anything you'd like to add?
So this is my biggest worry about during the construction phase is. What's gonna happen? During construction, I had numerous conversations with the engineers and the maintenance of traffic land or construction. I don't. Say I don't believe like they're lying. I, I, even all the measures are putting in place, it's still gonna be. Mess, and the only reason we haven't had more access to that intersection right now, this, is because the traffic line is so low, it's rare to meet a car there. That once you have constant traffic there. Wait, set up, sit there and look at it. Cross traffic situation.
Any other questions? If not, I will entertain a motion for approval of placing a stop, placing additional stop signs on Water Street at County Road three hundred west.
So move.
Motion, but a second. All right, I have a motion and a second for ordinance twenty-three, twenty-seven, stop signs on Water Street and South County Road three hundred west, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried, do we want us to spin the rules on this and get those, do we have the signs, are they ready to?
They're already.
You mentioned an idea, Ricky.
Great, wonderful.
Yeah.
Great, okay.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules, have a second reading of twenty-three, twenty-seven.
All right, I have a motion for suspension, suspension of the rules, do I have a second? All right, I have a motion and a second for suspensions of, suspension of the rules, allowing second read for twenty-three, twenty-seven, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, now I will entertain a motion for the second read of twenty-three, twenty-seven, stop signs on Water Street and South County Road three hundred west. Um, which suspended the rules to allow for second read on the same night it was introduced, so with that, I will entertain the motion.
So move.
So.
All right, I have a motion and a second for approval of twenty-three, twenty-seven, stop signs on Water Street and South County Road three hundred west, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We have gone through all of the new business on our agenda, public comments. General.
I live on the intersection of Main and Water Street, and I'm an advocate for Main and Water Street. I sit there on my porch, I watch the traffic there. I sometimes have a park above Water Street. Nobody, I would say. Maybe five percent of people stop at that stop sign, that three-way stop. If it was one way at least, we would make stop signs, also. So there's nobody left for it, the director, he's down, and, and, and four stop signs. Headed over to South.
Okay. Great, that is noted, we'll talk about it. Hear it out, or?
How do you feel about that?
Yeah, Jim was there.
Either that or no parking, but I know you wouldn't like that, so.
Yeah, there's other names, Brian Williams, right there, the parts out there, I have other names.
It is hard, you cannot get through if there's a hard car, and then there's another car coming, you cannot.
And even making that turn is rough, like if I'm sitting at the stoplight on water, or the stop sign on water, and somebody's trying to turn toward me onto water, like off of me, like.
Yeah, it's not, it's not right.
It's so narrow. I just hold my breath every time somebody's there.
Day is over, let's go.
Any other public comments? Okay, I will adjourn at seven oh eight.